2021, Ms. Hunt, would you take the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath? Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Gere? Ms. Moulton?
Christine Cleland McGrath is out of town today, so I would like to make a motion to excuse her from tonight's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Ms. Cleland McGrath. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Would you all now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We'll now go to item three on the agenda, which is an executive session. Potential litigation per RCW 42.03.110. And we will be in session approximately 30 minutes. That session will go to approximately 6:30. And the City Council may take further action following the executive session. And if we go beyond the 30 minutes, we will come out and inform you that when we will be coming back. Thank you. All right, at this time, we will excuse ourselves.
Executive session has been adjourned and no action was taken. And, let's see, what are we waiting for, everyone here? All right, I will call the regular city council meeting of August 16th back to order. And we will go from there. So we have item four, which is on under announcements and committee reports. And four A is the COVID-19 update. and a hospitalization rate of 8.4 COVID patients per 100,000 over the last seven days. Every county in Washington is experiencing an increase in COVID cases and hospitalization. The Washington Department of Health reports that in the last week, 95.5% of COVID cases were those, were from those not fully vaccinated. And 95.4% of COVID cases were hospitalized, were not fully vaccinated. And 94.3 of COVID-19 cases have died, that have died, were not vaccinated, not fully vaccinated. In Skagit County, as from March of 2020 till today, we've had 5,935 positive COVID cases. We've had 81 fatalities, 404 people hospitalized, with a total of cases of 6,821. The reason that the case number is so much higher than my report last week is because the county is reporting both PCR and antigen positive tests. Previously, PCR positive tests were the only ones that were reported. Antigen tests, or rapid tests, detects protein fragments specific to COVID. It can be done at the pharmacy, the clinic, the doctor's office, or the hospital. Turnaround time for these results is very quick and sometimes can be as quick as 15 minutes. PCR tests may be referred to as the viral or molecular test. It's considered the gold standard in detection. This test detects RNA, or the genetic material that's specific to the virus, and can detect the virus within days of infection, even those who have had no symptoms. The test can also be done at a pharmacy, clinic, and doctor's office or hospital. The turnaround for that test is two to three days. Antigen positive cases are treated the same way as, at the county, as PCR confirmed cases, with investigative follow-up by our staff and mandatory isolation. Due to the availability and the popularity of the antigen test, the county made the decision to include these numbers in the cumulative count. This will provide a more accurate picture of the community transmission and help guide efforts to respond COVID-19. Vaccines in Skagit County, to date, we've given out 157,304 vaccine doses have been administered. We are at 66.4% of all Skagitonians 12 years older, partially vaccinated against COVID-19. If you're looking for a vaccine provider near you, check your local pharmacy or visit a pop-up site. This coming Saturday, August 21st, at the Anacortes Ready to Learn Fair from 9:00 a.m. to noon, there will be a vaccine provider. Wednesday, August 25th, Immaculate Conception Regional School from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's also a weekly vaccine clinic on Wednesdays from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Skagit County Administration Building Hearing Room. And Thursday, August 26th, Skagit Valley YMCA from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. No vaccine is 100% effective, and we are seeing breakthrough cases in Skagit County due to the Delta variant. Getting vaccinated remains the number one thing you can do to protect yourself against becoming critically ill. And if you think you've been exposed or experiencing symptoms, please get tested. The Skagit County Public Health will offer free antigen testing at our Wednesday evening vaccine clinics at the Skagit County Admin Building at the 700 South Second Street in Mount Vernon. Anyone five years and older, no appointment or insurance is required, and test results are available in 15 minutes. And I don't have an official report from Island Hospital, but I was told that they had the most COVID cases in the last week than they've had during the whole pandemic. And that may be four to six people in the hospital hospitalized at this point. So things have changed with the Delta variant. So I just encourage everyone in the community to use the tools we have, get a vaccine, and wear your mask. Here at the city, masks are required in all city facilities. And that concludes my report tonight.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I have a friend that works at Peace Health Hospital in Bellingham in the ICU. And over the weekend, she told me that there were 17 patients in the ER waiting to be admitted with COVID that there were not beds for. One was a two-year-old person and one was a seven-year-old child. So it's serious, and I guess we can't underscore that enough, how much it's important to be vaccinated. Thanks.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
Just to add on to what you said, and then also Ms. Moulton. Just in our personal family, we have people that are in medicine and providing medicine. And so, but the thing that I thought I heard hardest to, emotionally to absorb, is that there are hospitals calling other hospitals and individuals calling other hospitals, pleading for their loved one to be admitted. And the hard part is telling them that there's just no room. And imagine those coming in with strokes, heart attacks, and other things like that. So it is a serious thing that, you know, as we continue to look for ways to just get our lives back to where it is. And so, I just wanted to point that out, it's very difficult right about now.
Thank you, Mr. Young. All right, at this time, we'll move to item 4B, which is our Personnel Committee Report.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. McDougal.
Personnel Committee met last week. And Ms. Chu led us through a discussion. We actually have, our primary item on tonight's agenda is update personnel policies. So we did a review of some of that, or preview of some of that, in particular, some highlights. We're adding Juneteenth as a holiday. The state has added it as a state holiday, so that's fantastic. We're looking at removal of the shared leave program, which has not been used in years and years. This is a safety net kind of benefit in case of like a catastrophic issue for an employee. But like, like we said, it hasn't been used in ages. A couple other items we discussed, there is some financial impact for Juneteenth as a holiday, as well as some longevity benefits for, for non-union employees to match that which the Teamsters get. The dollar figures, I think, for the Juneteenth, Ms. Chu, correct me if I'm wrong from the packet, I think it's about $20,000 impact. And then, a couple other items we discussed, fire is looking to promote three lieutenants to captains, and looking at kind of a January 1st date for that. And then, within the HR staff itself, we've got the two open positions, the HR Director and the HR Manager. Earlier today, I had the pleasure of getting to sit in on an interview panel with Chief Floyd and with Mayor Gere and Ms. Chu. And we went through, we got to interview seven candidates in kind of a lightning round. And from that, we had a few candidates that looked really good that are moving on to kind of a next round of interviews. And so Ms. Chu will be coordinating that over the next few days, I think. So that's the Personnel Committee meeting, unless I missed anything.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on then to our Finance Committee Report.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
We met as the Finance Committee and reviewed a couple of, a couple of emerging issues. Number one, finance is going to solicit direct quotes for banking services with an eye toward moving away from our current bank and trying to achieve some better customer service from our banking provider. There's no requirement for a full-on RFP sealed bid process, so they're going to look for direct quotes. We also got just some review of some of our ongoing revenue streams and looked at some of the CFP at a pretty high level. We looked at fiber build-out and timelines, and the fact that our line of credit for fiber requires repayment January 1, 2024. Our concept here, we think, is that we would be almost done with the fiber build-out by then and would then have a very good grasp on what those costs are and would go ahead and convert that to a 20-year bond, so that we have a greater period of time over which we can pay that off. Finance will be pursuing some changes to the waste management contract. They proposed three. One was a rate increase, which they're not pursuing, unless somebody really would like to. The other two were a change to the inflator in the contract, to the sewer garbage inflator, price inflator, instead of the regular CPI. And addition of a contamination charge equivalent to another trash pickup if you fill your recycle bin with trash. And then, immediately, I guess, following the meeting, there were, there was some discussion outside the meeting about the Anacortes Cinema. And there was a proposal from an outside entity that we purchase the cinema building. The business, the building, and the property are all separately owned. We own the property, and somebody else owns the business, and somebody else, a third person, owns the building that the business exists in. The building has an assessed value of around $750,000, and our sense is, no, we don't have an extra $750,000 laying around to purchase the building that's already sitting on our real property. Especially because that would essentially be a bailout for a business that we're already effectively subsidizing in their rent.
Thank you, any additions?
Hey, Gere.
Mr. Young.
Just a quick follow-up question. I know this may not be the platform for it, but I was just curious about the thought to why we would consider the movie theater land, I guess, that we already own. I guess it's just possible future city use, is what we were thinking about? Or this may not be the right venue for that, maybe?
We could bring that to a future, future meeting if people want to talk about it.
Yes.
Our recommendation was simply no action.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to item 4D, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee Report.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The HACX Committee met last Thursday at 9:00 a.m., as we do every week, every Thursday at 9:00 a.m. now. And we had quite a few service providers in attendance, as well as some community members, which, who we were glad to see. We heard a lot, we tried to absorb a lot of information, and I will try to distill that into a concise report. What we're finding is there is funding available now through the federal government, but one of the main problems, maybe the main problem right now, is the long waiting lists and the workforce issues. There simply is not capacity of providers to handle the needs. So even if, and when there's money, providers aren't able to accept any new clients. So there's really a bottleneck there that's unfortunate for our residents. There are lots of open positions as well. So, that is ongoing. We did learn some things about people who are committed involuntarily to care and their discharge plans, what happens when they leave. The biggest problem is there is no place for them to go. There's no housing. And to find the services to transition people back to society. So the, some of the people are sent to Pearson King County because there is actually more housing there. As we know, there's very little in Skagit County. And many of the people were previously homeless and don't have a support network. So there's not a lot of very good news there. There is a tsunami of need, is how one person put it. We also talked about designated crisis responders in Skagit County who are able to connect people with care, and there aren't very many of them either. And they're certified by the state. And as far as we know, Compass Health is the only place taking involuntary behavioral health commitments. We have a fragmented system, and it's really hard putting all the pieces together that are necessary to help people. So we're still in the information gathering stage. We'll continue to do that for a while. And we will also eventually do the community roundtable. But right now, we are just trying our best to learn as much as we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. We'll now go to item 4E, our Skagit County Law and Justice.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Mayor.
So Law and Justice Council met the 10th of August, so Tuesday, I think, last week,
Search for existing facility that could serve as a temporary detention facility. And then finally, search for existing facility to refurbish to become permanent juvenile detention center. And just current stat on juvenile facility, again, currently not 18- and 19-year-olds, but they're averaging about five with a capacity of 19 rooms in the current facility. So that was the major subject of the county looking for options to deal with something that's probably going to come up next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And finally, Item 4F, our Public Works Committee.
Mayor Geer?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at 5:00 p.m. today. Mr. Walters, Mr. Young, Mr. Buckenmeyer, Ms. Tesh, and I were there. We talked about the Samish Water Service Agreement that's under review right now. That's the development, including the gas station near Lake Campbell. And that water agreement, after being reviewed, will come to council pretty soon. Next, we talked about the Crowley Leak Detection Sensing System, which, as you may recall, is using fiber optic network in the in-pipe leak detection. The staff is going out with a request for proposals internationally to source that kind of system to make sure we have a really good option to do that. That project is in a bond issue already and in an approved capital facilities plan and also identified in our Risk and Resiliency Report. So information on that will be forthcoming also. We talked a bit about the improvements at 12th Street and Commercial Avenue and the roundabout that has been proposed. It turns out that the current iteration of that would have some pretty large impacts on right-of-way and necessitate some property acquisition that would be quite costly. And staff is reviewing that to determine what the best path forward is. There, one option is also for an improved signalized intersection there, rather than a roundabout. So staff will come back to the Public Works Committee and Council eventually with ideas on that and what's the best way to move forward and the most cost-effective in that project. Also, there's been an appointment of a new street supervisor. His name is Brandon Lowry, and he's been a lead worker at the City Public Works Department for quite a few years now. He is recognized for his excellent customer service in the different departments he's worked with in the past, his wealth of knowledge, and also what a good teammate he is. And there's excitement in the department about his promotion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. So at this time, we'll go to public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak. Oh, yes, and I see Rochelle is on line. And Rochelle, you can speak now. You'll have to turn on your mic. All right, go ahead, Rochelle. Can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me now?
You're breaking up. Try again.
Can I call into the meeting? Would that be better?
Can anyone hear her?
No.
Yeah, it's better than it was.
Okay, so can you guys?
Well, there you go.
Okay, great, thank you. So aloha, City Council. I was just wondering if Anacortes is going to require a vaccine for our city employees? Are we going to implement a citywide mask mandate and not just indoors for the city buildings? I'd like to know that if I need a police officer or firefighter, that they would be masked and vaccinated. I would like to know when I walk into the city hall, I am not at risk from an unvaccinated employee. I would like to go to the library and the museums with my family and friends and know that we are all protected. I know that this is a hot-button issue and has been since the start of the pandemic, except this is an election year, so everyone seems to be dancing around this issue even more than they had been before. We are only making a turn for the worse, and we can send a clear message that we value our community, our tourists, that we are not a selfish community, and we are a compassionate city. Please do the right thing and require vaccinations for all taxpayer-funded physicians in Anacortes. Being a decent human is not political. Mahalo.
Thank you, Rochelle. At this point, I guess I'll address this for a moment. At this point, we are following the Skagit County and CDC guidelines, and we'll continue to work with them on this. So thank you for your comments tonight. All right, we're going to move on then to Item 6, which is our Consent Agenda A and B.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Miller?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Carter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're now moving on to Item 7, under Other Business. This is Resolution 3049, Personnel Policies. This is a discussion with possible action. Ms. Chu, are you going? Yes, thank you. Your mic's not on, Emily.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the audience. Tonight, I am pleased to present to you the updated personnel policies. The policies were last updated in December of 2017. Prior to that, we had a history of updating them on a close-to-annual basis. And so it was important to me to spend some time reviewing the policies and ensuring that they are correct and current according to updates that have been made in state and federal laws. When we are updating our personnel policies, it does not happen in a vacuum. First, I go out and identify the policies that need to be changed. We have an attorney review them, who is skilled in employment law. And then we provide a session and a time for employees and the collective bargaining unit to review and provide comment on the proposed changes. We actually had a very engaged Zoom meeting for that conversation with the employees. And two changes that were made as a result were to the addition of the Juneteenth holiday, not having that take away from one of the personal holidays, but be actually an added holiday. And the second item was the retainer, or retaining of the shared leave program. While that program is not used frequently, it is viewed as a safety net for employees that run into an issue that would otherwise cause them to be in a leave without pay status. And it allows other employees to donate vacation leave to help during those difficult times. I have provided a kind of synopsis of the proposed changes in the policies, of the policies in the council packet, including both a clean copy of the proposed policies and one that tracks the changes. There are two items in the proposed policies that have a financial impact. One is the addition of Juneteenth as a city-recognized holiday. As this applies now, it will only apply to non-represented employees since holidays are things that are addressed within the collective bargaining agreement. It will be something that will be negotiated for the employees that are covered by a collective bargaining agreement. The cost of that change is an additional of $20,500 annually. The other item that has a financial impact is the calculation of the longevity benefits for non-represented employees to mirror what was negotiated in the Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement. This increases the multiplier from $2 per month to $5 per month, times the years of service, up to a maximum of $100. I preface this with also indicating that any employees hired after January of 2022 will no longer be eligible for this benefit. So we are moving away from having that benefit going forward. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have about the personnel policies. I open it to you.
Mayor Geer? Thank you for the clean copy and marked-up copy. I only had one minor thing, and it was under the Policy 2013 at the end, talking about supervisors are not authorized to provide references on behalf of the city without approval and involvement of human resources. And I just thought, again, the minor thing, I don't know why, it just doesn't say "without the approval of the director." But then I thought, then I looked through and like, they should all say, there's a lot of references to the Human Resources Department, and I thought they should all say "the director." We try to, you know, I think we saw this in some other documents. So again, just your, I don't know if that helps or makes it too difficult, but that was just the minor thing that jumped out at me. Other than that, it all looked fine.
We're happy to make that adjustment.
Any comments or questions from Ms. Chu?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Walters?
I do think that that is a good point, that departments should not be in charge of things, individuals should. And that's generally how we write code. But there are a lot of places in the document where that change would need to be made. At one point, we had talked about doing a wholesale rewrite because there are so many places in the personnel policies where the rule is contained under the heading "comment." And we've done a little bit more in this document to put more rules under the heading "comment." Do we anticipate that in the near future? A complete rewrite to better clarify how some of these things work? Maybe that's a task for the next HR Director.
Probably, yeah, I believe so. Okay, additional comments or questions? I must commend Ms. Chu. We did have a really great interactive, lots of city employees weighed in. We had a morning of a group Zoom meeting. People came and went, and every question was addressed. Like she said, it wasn't done in a vacuum. It was a very open process.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Carter?
No other comments or questions? I move to adopt Resolution 3049, adopting the city's revised personnel policies. Second?
Who was the second? Was that Young?
Excuse me, Mr. Carter. Does your motion include the correction requested by Mr. Miller?
Yes.
We had a motion by Mr. Carter, a second by Mr. Young, to approve Resolution 3049, the Personnel Policy, with Mr. Miller's corrections. Another discussion. Ms. Hunt, would you call for a vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And at this time, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for attending. Good night.